From the studios at Fitchburg Access Television, I'm Michael Dallamonica, and these are the Lemonster School Committee debates. First up is our Ward 1 debate, where the candidates are Michael Stassen and Jennifer Alker. Jennifer Alker was invited to participate, and she sent me an email a couple of weeks back indicating that she declined participating in the debate. When we asked if there was any specific concern, she went unresponsive. So, we are here, as is customary at FATV and Flap TV when we do these debates. We do have the podium here waiting for Ms. Alker. If she did decide to swoop in and become part of this debate, otherwise we'll chat with Mr. Stassen, follow the same general format that we're doing here. A little less back and forth, obviously, but we're going to follow the same format that we otherwise would for this half-hour debate. So, Mr. Stassen, we'll start right in with the questions. You're running for school committee. You were on school committee previously. You took two years off. You're running again for a seat that you held in Ward 1. What are the two biggest challenges you see coming in the next two years? What do you propose doing about it?
All right. So, I think, number one, the school committee has two primary responsibilities: policy, financial oversight. In the last two years, the finance subcommittee has been disbanded. So, from my point of view, the school committee has not been doing its job of financial oversight. Melanie Michaels, who's the school business administrator, is fantastic. I trust her. Like, I don't think untoward things are happening. But the school committee has a responsibility to understand the budget, what's the revenue stream, how it's being spent. They have to approve that budget. They need, right there, the representatives of the taxpayers to make sure the taxpayer money is being spent well, according to the policy and according to good process. So, it's really important that the finance subcommittee be recreated and actually meet once or twice a month, as it did the four years I was on the school committee, with the superintendent and the school business administrator, to make sure that we understand what funds we have, how we're spending them, what's the plan. In particular, when I was on before, we had budget crisis after budget crisis. With the Student Opportunity Act, we've now gotten significant additional funding from the state. So, it's no longer in crisis mode. That's good. We're able to, you know, do a lot of the things we needed to do but weren't able to do before. The key is the extra money for the Student Opportunity Act phases in over five years. So, for five years, and the first two they didn't really fund it properly, but for the last two years, we've gotten significant bumps in state money. And there's another year of that coming. And then it will go back to sort of the normal cost of living increase on top of that. So, it's really important that we have a plan to increase our spending in such a way that it's sustainable when it's not an extra $9 million a year, but goes back to like an extra $2 or $3 million a year. I'm sure the school, I'm sure the school business administrator, Melanie, has that plan, but I think it's important that the school committee understand the plan, approve the plan, you know, be able to explain the plan to other people. So, that's the first thing. I really think it's important that we get back to financial oversight. The other challenge facing us this year is our superintendent, Paula Deacon. This is her last year. She's announced retirement at the end of the year, June 30th. So, this is the year we'll have to be searching for a new superintendent. So, you know, I expect we will have some internal candidates. I expect we'll have some external candidates. We need to pick someone, you know, who's a good decision-maker, good at leading, will be good at developing the staff under him or her. And obviously, that's a process for the whole school committee, but I think that's an important, that's another big challenge facing us.
So, essentially, finance and the choosing of a new superintendent. And so, in walking the fine line between what is fiscally responsible in terms of finance, you know, because you answer to the taxpayers of Lemonster, obviously, versus what the schools need, do you feel that in previous years, do you feel specifically this past term, do you think that the school committee in Lemonster has done a good job in balancing those considerations?
Well, it's hard to know, because the finance report is done in the full school committee. Nobody asks questions. So, I'm, you know, I'm pretty confident, I mean, I think, I think we've had reasonably good direction from the administration. So, I believe that good choices have probably been made. But there's, if the school committee isn't diving into that and asking those questions and can't explain it to other people, then we've kind of failed in our mission of providing that transparency, of being...
Reinstituting the finance subcommittee would bring more transparency overall, is what you're saying.
It would mean that there'd be four school committee members who would really be pouring over the details, meeting constantly, would be able to answer any questions the public or the rest of the school committee asked about how are we spending our money and what's the plan.
So, second question. Lemonster's middle schools relatively new by public school standards.
Yes.
Getting along a little too, but relatively new by public school standards. And the high school was refurbished. However, the elementary schools in Lemonster are 50 years old or more. I believe the youngest elementary school in Lemonster is more than 50 years old. Fitchburg recently had a new school, a new elementary school approved for 75% state funding. Do you see Lemonster as maybe needing to put forward an application for school funding over the next term, looking towards that? Do you think it's time that a new elementary school be built in Lemonster?
So, we do have an application already in for Fallbrook Elementary, because it's in by far the worst shape of any of them. It was made in cinder blocks. Right now, there's, you know, there's infrastructure on the outside, because what used to be was on the inside of the concrete where you can't get at it. I don't, I'm not, and maybe slightly out of date, the last I heard, they hadn't been determined for sure whether they're going to attempt to renovate it or rebuild it. I think rebuilding it would be better, but, you know, we're at the mercy of some state rules about, they have to look at the two choices and decide which is the thing that should be done. But that building is definitely old and kind of in bad shape and should be replaced. So, that's already in process. These things take forever, because you have to propose it, they have to come out and study it, the city has to commit to funding their portion of it, which I believe it has done. They have to make the determination of which way they're going, and then they provide money, and then you make plans, and then you start working.
You don't see a lot of renovations, per se. I mean, my, my father, who's not completely ancient, worked on, one of the first jobs he had when he came to this country was he worked on the North Middlesex High School. And it has since been rebuilt from the one that he did. So, it's very rare that you see these schools that are 40 or 50 years old get rehabilitated. Lemonster High School seems to be one of the few examples I remember in recent years. What is your opinion on that approach, specifically with respect to Lemonster High School?
Right. So, I mean, I think what they did at Lemonster High School was nice, right? I think they did a good job. The renovated parts are, definitely have a newer, modern feel. There are places that they didn't touch that you can still see are old. You know, I think it really depends on the building, and I'm not an architect, I'm not a structural engineer, like, you know, there are experts who will look and say, it's going to cost us this much to fix, determine if it's fixable and how much it will cost to fix it. And then, okay, what if we just tear it down and build a new one? What'll that cost? You know, there are all kinds of things that are balancing. I don't believe it's actually up to the school committee which we do. I think, I believe the school committee has been pretty consistently in favor of a new building for Fallbrook, but I believe it's the state that chooses which they're funding.
Ultimately, the state is the one with the money, or at least 75% of the money.
That's right. We're on the hook for the rest, but...
The school committee can serve as an advocacy wing for some of these projects.
That's correct. And certainly, I would advocate for a new building for Fallbrook.
All right. So, possibly a new Fallbrook school on the horizon. So, as you mentioned, the Student Opportunity Act reforms to state financing.
Yep.
Has led to a bigger slice of pie for cities like Lemonster.
Yes.
We don't have the funding crises that we used to have.
That's correct.
And, so, this is question three, by the way. And we don't have the funding crises that we used to have in terms of scrambling for funding. Now, the thing is, though, Lemonster traditionally has done net school spending. There's a formula, and this is the amount that the state says needs to be spent.
It's the minimum.
And Lemonster provides itself on going at or just over net school spending.
That's correct.
With the state reforms, that, there's a little less pressure on the city in terms of municipal funding. So, do you think it's fiscally responsible for Lemonster to continue to do what it's doing? Or would, on the other hand, Lemonster is a very fiscally strong city, takes in, there is a surplus usually each year, could it afford to do more? So, how would you balance this idea of fiscal responsibility with making sure that the schools get everything that they, that they need?
All right. So, first of all, my position all along was we were, we've been spending about $6 million a year as a city on contributions to the retirement fund. And most of that is makeup contributions for way back when we used to not contribute, which every municipality did. Lemonster's gone really aggressive on the catch-up. We've put all of our, basically, all of our available funds into that one thing. So, we, our funding level is much better than everybody else's. Back when we were in crisis, my position was it doesn't make sense to put everything into that while something else is in crisis. We could have put $1 million extra in the schools and still had $5 million, which is still, well, we would have caught us up faster than anybody else. Today, in the four years I was on the school committee, the net school spending number, and therefore our budget, went up a total of $9.2 million over those four years. The first year I was off, the increase for that one year was $9.6 million. So, it is true that we still had a net school spending budget. We were still at the minimum, but that minimum was suddenly $9.6 million higher than before. It's hard to suddenly spend that much more money. It's hard to go find teachers, especially that increase happened exactly when the teacher shortage happened. You also don't want to just suddenly spend a ton extra without a plan, because like I said, that can catch you when it's no longer going up an extra $9 million a year. For this coming year, I believe it's, or this year, it's also another almost $9 million. So, I'm fairly confident that the school department should be in a position that's much stronger than they used to be, even though it's technically still at or barely above the minimum, because the minimum has come up so much.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's, you're leaning towards the, you don't mind taking the fiscally responsible route in terms of, in terms of spending on the schools?
There's a pot that's yay big for the city, and you've got to prioritize where it goes. And my position before was the school department's portion was too small. Now, I think it's probably close to right. I do think now, again, when we get, when we reach the final number for the Student Opportunity Act, the extra, when we've finished phasing in the extra, the jumps in the net school spending number will not be so extreme after that. So, you know, being net school spending this year is probably not a problem. The city should be thinking about what happens when the minimum goes back to going small jumps each year. Should the city spend a little extra? Not a huge amount, but a little extra to make sure that what progress we've made when the jumps were big is sustainable afterwards. And I think that's a big conversation. I don't have an answer of they should kick in this many dollars, but we should really be looking at what have we done? How are we spending the extra? What's it going to cost to sustain it? Will our increase be big enough for that? Or can we get a little extra? Or do we need to scale back on what we're doing? Like, right? That's the conversation that has to be had.
And reinstituting a finance subcommittee would foster some of these discussions a little better than previously.
Right. It would give people who are really looking at that stuff and would be able to, you know, have informed opinions about how we're spending our money and what the plan is and will this work out.
And so, my next question, fourth question that we have scheduled here tonight, is nationally, school committees, or as some states would call them, school boards, have started to wade into some hot-button political issues.
Yes.
And that's what makes the headlines.
Yes.
Okay. The number crunching and the, and the really boring stuff, the searching for a superintendent, that does not make the news. It's these hot-button political issues, whether it be regulation of books being taught or being allowed in the libraries, any perceived cancel culture issues out there, or gender identity issues, items like that where there's, it, they can be polarizing politically subjects. To what extent do you believe that these political or social issues need to be addressed in the Lemonster School Committee over the next couple of years, if at all? I guess, what do you see coming down the pike, and what do you feel should be addressed?
Right. So, I mean, I'll just, you mentioned book bans or book restrictions. I'll just say I'm opposed to those. While not every book is for everybody, I think there's some book for everybody. So, a book that might not be good for me or makes me uncomfortable, there are students who need access to that book. There are librarians whose job and training is to try to curate a library full of books that are appropriate for the students at the grade level that have access to that. So, I think it's fine to raise questions about, you know, are we doing that right? But I think that we have people who are attempting to do that correctly. And soon as we, you know, as soon as I take out all the books in the library that make me uncomfortable, I've just denied access to books for other people who might really need those. That was the first one you mentioned. I've forgotten what the second topic you mentioned was.
Gender identity issues.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, we have a very diverse student population, and I think it's important that we meet all of our students where they are and provide them the support that they need to thrive in our school and be spending their time getting a good education, rather than spending their time in crisis because of noneducational things. So, I'm not in favor of restricting access to support for them. I'm in favor of providing them what they need. And that means, you know, recognizing that not every student approaches identity issues, for example, the way I do. And whether I can understand the way they think or not is not the issue. It's we have to support them where they are. So, I'm not sure if that quite answers your question, but...
So, back to the, well, it does, in a sense, but back to the book thing a little bit. I guess what some would say is that there's a fine line between outright bans and maybe regulating what students are exposed to or what is actively being taught for curriculum.
Sure.
So, do you, do you see that there's a potential blurry line there? And if so, how would you address that?
Yeah. Well, so, first of all, of course, the curriculum is set by the state, not by our school committee, right? We can locally choose, sometimes we can choose which company's books we use to address that curriculum, like, because there's more than one approved by the state, but the state sets the curriculum. It is already the case that, as a parent, if you don't want your child reading that particular book, I believe you have the option to opt your child out of that. I think that's, and so, I mean, that's there. So, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with me saying, not only do I not want my child reading that, none of them should get to. Because if other kids, if their parents are okay with that, we shouldn't be taking that away from them.
All right. So, because this is more of a back and forth versus an opportunity for discussion, as it would be with a two, three, or later on today, a four-person debate, we have a kind of time for a couple of just bonus questions that we'll run through before we give you a chance to do your closing argument.
Okay.
So, one specific to yourself, because this relates to the last term that you were on school committee, which is the 2019 to 2021 term.
Very tough time.
That was, of course, infamously the COVID term.
Yep.
And in 20, going into the 2020, 2021 school year, because what had happened was the, the schools were shut down entirely come March of 2020.
That was a state decision.
By the state. And then the state, over the summer, well, okay, now had guidelines that basically said it was up to individual school committees in terms of whether the schools were going to go, are going, were going to go a hybrid format, a at-home, completely at-home format. And, and that was really school committee choices, the choice. So, by a five to four vote, just prior to the 2020, 2021 school year.
We started remote.
We started remote. It was a five to four vote in the school committee, and you were one of the five in favor, four opposed. And you were one of the five that chose remote learning versus hybrid. And there was fallout from that.
Oh, yes. There were people very, very much not, there are people who are happy with that and people who are very unhappy with that. I heard from both.
Why don't you walk us through, what is your, so, voters of Lemonster trying to decide, well, okay, so, are we putting somebody back in there who may be voted, something, maybe something that could have set the children back or something like that? So, how would you address that for the voters of Lemonster? Here's your opportunity to do so.
Sure. So, first of all, that was very frustrating for everybody on the school committee, because the state could have made the decision. They have the public health department. They have all the information. They have experts whose job it should have been to tell us what to do, but they didn't want the political blowback. They put it on us. So, each individual school committee, with just people elected not for their public health background, had to make these decisions. It was a difficult call, and I was very much on the fence, but I did vote to start remote. I felt that the, at that point, there were no, there's no vaccine yet. We just started testing. And the numbers, the rate of people infected in Lemonster was climbing rapidly. And so, you know, I felt like, I knew that education remotely would not be as good as in person, but I also knew that if everybody was in person, we would have more people infected with COVID and more deaths. So, I chose the, what I thought was the cautious side. Under the guidelines, if you chose to be remote, you were supposed to identify students who that would not work for and get them into the classrooms, which is a point I made the night we had the vote. I did also say we need to get on that right away. So, we did pretty quickly. We brought special education kids who really needed in-person stuff. We got them back in the schools. I know that the parents thought that, there was a delay to that, because the administration had to set it up to make it work. And I know that was frustrating for parents, but we got them back in the schools. The vocational kids who needed hours in the shop in order to get their certificates, we got them back in. Eventually, we got the youngest ones in. You know, it was, it's impossible to make completely correct decisions when you don't have all the information. You have to decide based on the information you have. And it was, it was tough, but I think we did the best we could with what was available. We learned from it. It's very clear that the kindergartners, first graders, and second graders were affected the most. So, you know, it would have been better if we had gotten them back into the classroom faster than we did. We also had, you know, we had middle schoolers and high schoolers with some, with anxiety issues who actually thrived when they didn't have classmates around to distract them. You know, it was, it affected different students differently. And, I don't know. On my last day in the school committee, 130 Lemonster residents had died of COVID, and I know more have died since. It's not like it was, I mean, COVID was real, we had to do something. So, I mean, that's how I approached the decision. I had to think about trying to balance what's best educationally versus what's best safety-wise for the students, for the faculty, for the staff, for the family of those people. We have teachers who have immune, who are immune compromised. We have students whose parents or grandparents live at home with immune, who are immune So, I thought that it was important to try to protect them.
So, one last question. You had mentioned new superintendent coming aboard, and Paula Deacon, existing superintendent, very well-regarded and maybe difficult to replace. But what are you, if elected to the school committee, and you are in charge of hiring a new superintendent, what are you going to be looking for?
So, ideally, I'd be looking for someone with experience. I'm really looking for someone who, good decision-maker, because the superintendent has to make decisions all the time, from, from seemingly simple ones like, do we close today because of the snow, to big ones like, which, which way are we going to go curriculum-wise? What staff are we going to put where? I want someone who is going to work to develop the staff under them. I think any good leader is responsible for helping the people under them grow. Sometimes that means they'll grow and get promoted within our system. Sometimes that means they'll grow and get a better job somewhere else, and we'll have to replace them. That's always sad, but it's good for them. So, I want, I want someone who doesn't just try to do everything themselves. I want them to grow the people under them, rely on them to do some of the work. I'm hoping that we have quite a few good candidates. I'm expecting, we'll do a national search. So, I'm hoping we'll get quite, I'm hoping we'll get internal candidates. I'm hoping we'll get external candidates. And it won't just be me, it will be the, or whoever's on, it'll be the whole school committee. Of course, there'll be a team that will interview and then do initial interviews, but full interviews would be with the school, whole school committee. Technically, the whole school committee hires the superintendent, so they have to agree who they're hiring. So, it's, you know, it's a, it's a conversation. But that's what I, I'm looking for, someone to provide leadership, focus on academic needs of the kids, focus on developing staff, focus on communication within the school system at all levels, from staff up to the superintendent. Sometimes that bogs down here and there. I think Paula's done a very good job, on the whole, of communicating with families. We've gotten far more emails home than we used to, and they actually tell us useful things, right? I'd like to see that continue. So, I'm definitely not interested in hiring someone who doesn't want to talk to parents.
Right. All right. Well, Michael Stassen, we have just a bit over two minutes left, and so, you get a up-to-two-minute opportunity as a closing statement to make your case to the voters of Lemonster as to why you should be elected to Ward 1 School Committee.
Okay. Probably should have rehearsed something, but here goes. So, I mean, I've lived in Lemonster for a long time now. My children, I've had four, I have four children. They've gone to almost every school in Lemonster over the time that we've lived there. So, I have some experience with all of them. I teach math at Fitchburg State, so I, I'm in a, I have a background to actually understand the finances. It is sort of math stuff that I teach. So, I think I have some skill at trying to explain what I found out about them to people in general. I do really think that the financial oversight is, I mean, it's, I mean, it's in the statute, actually. I mean, the school committee literally has two jobs: policy and financial oversight. So, I really think it's important to restore that. And I promise, I mean, the whole school committee has to vote, but I can promise you my vote will be to restore the finance subcommittee, and I plan to volunteer to be on it. I live on Main Street, close to Johnny Appleseed, sort of, you know? I've worked on, I was on the Johnny Appleseed School Improvement Committee for 10 years, meeting with principal and teachers and other parents, talking about how things were going there before I was on the school committee. I volunteered as youth soccer coach and youth basketball coach. I've been involved for a long time. So, I'm volunteering my services to be your representative on the school committee for Ward 1, and I would appreciate your vote in November.
All right. Michael Stassen, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you for having me.
And I would, well, it's a pleasure. And so, basically, November 7th, Tuesday, November 7th, local elections. Now, we're doing four of these school committee debate series. We have the Ward 3 contested election for Lemonster. We have Ward 1. We have the At-Large Lemonster. And Fitchburg does not do Ward seats, so we have an At-Large Fitchburg debate coming later on as well. So, we're going to have four different debates for school committee this season. And I'm going to say the same thing all four times. Your vote counts the most in local elections. People ignore the local elections. These are the candidates, these are the political figures who are likely to affect your vote the most. Get out there and vote, please. November 7th. Thank you. Thank you.